...which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with literacy and justice for all."
All right. Next item of business is our spotlight, tonight on Lockwood Matthews Mansion Young Writers Contest winners. Ms. Keane?
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our spotlight section of our agenda for Tuesday, March 17th, 2015. And tonight, we will be honoring Lockwood Matthews Mansion Museum for the Young Writers Competition winners. The Norwalk Board of Education, tonight, recognizes students who participated in and won a writing competition organized by the Lockwood Matthew Mansion Museum. Last school year, the museum launched a young writers' competition for students from area schools. The purpose was to encourage creative thinking and writing, and to introduce mid-to-late 19th-century history and the arts to young people. Museum educators dressed in period costume to meet with teachers and students in third and eighth grade classrooms to introduce them to the mansion. That was followed by a visit to the museum, where students drew ideas and inspiration for their story. The competition required students to create a mystery story set between 1868 and 1900, with the mansion as the backdrop. The story needed to be between 500 and 800 words for the elementary school level, and up to 2,500 words for 8th graders. While the program was started last year, winners were announced in this current school year. Writers of the top stories had the opportunity to attend a ceremony at the museum, where they were introduced to New York Times bestselling author, Steve Barry. On behalf of all of us here on the Board of Education, we'd like to offer our congratulations to the following students. We have Amy Saint-Amed, Eliza Ayella, Jamie DeGuzman, Balal Miman, Samantha Moody, and Bruna Silvestri. We also would like to thank the teachers who supported these students during this program. Lupita Williams, as well as Sue Straffalino from Columbus Magnet School, Martha Franco from Kendall Elementary School, and Holly Bossinger from Nathan Hale Middle School. We also would like to thank Patsy Breschah, who is on the Board of Directors, who's the president, who's been very inspirational and very involved in this program as well. Here, Norwalk Public Schools is very fortunate to have supportive community leaders, including the Lockwood Matthew Museum. We're grateful to the museum, its patrons and benefactors for their commitment to Norwalk schools, as well as to their cultural and educational programs such as this. Do we have our certificates, Mr. Lyons?
Well, let's see. We sure do.
All right. What I'd like to do, I'm hoping many of the students will be here tonight. I'm going to mention your name, and once I do, if you can come up to the board here, shake our hands. We'd love to shake your hand, and we'd like to give you a certificate. So, the first student that we have is Amy Saint-Amed.
That's all right. We lose them every time.
Sorry about that. Here you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Amy. That was very nice.
Eliza Ayella.
Congratulations.
Are you one of our middle schoolers?
Uh, former.
Okay, all right. Jamie DeGuzman. We'll make sure she gets her certificate, if she's not here tonight. Balal Miman. Ninth grade, right? High school? And we have Samantha Muti.
Congratulations, Samantha.
Hi, Samantha. Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations.
And we have Bruna Silvestri. She doesn't seem to make it tonight, but we'll make sure she gets her certificate. We also have someone here, Elise Sullivan, if she's here. Elise, thank you. We'll make sure we get your certificate to you. Oh, I'm going to hold that. I have to say that this program, I was fortunate enough, thank you, to be there for the ceremony, and it really is just great to see these students work so hard, and really be part of this program, and win these wonderful awards. I also would like to thank, if she's here tonight, Lupita Williams. I don't see Lupita. I see Sue Straffalino. Thank you, Sue, from Columbus. It's Martha Franco here, from Kendall. No, we want to thank her as well. Ellie from Nathan Hale Middle School. Thank her. And also to thank Patsy Breschah. Patsy, if you could say hi. Thank you so much for all you did. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Kasimis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comment section, when I call your name out, please come up to the podium. And when you get to the podium, please give us your name and your address for the transcript. Also, you'll have three minutes, and our guidelines are, please keep things civil. When there are 30 seconds left, I will wave my hand. At that point, we ask that you close your comments. Our first person up is Anna Forbes.
Hello. My name is Anna. I'm at Arice and Ford's. I reside at 64 Hill Drive in Norwalk. I'm at Ock's Land Resort. Actually, we have our second annual Harlem Wizard fundraiser. We email all the boards to participate in our event. And we want to thank Artie Cassimus and Mayor Erich Wiling, as our partners, Mike Barvis, Mike Lyons, and Liz Lyons, as volunteers and financial contributors. Thank you. This is a community event that brings us all together from different areas of the city in ages for an afternoon fun. This year, we were able to raise approximately $7,000. This is a small step toward the larger goal of renovating our current library to a learning commons, which will support our children for 21st century learning. We understand that as a district, we were finalists for the Race to the Top grant. Although we did receive it, it is our hope that the district will continue to pursue funding for capital improvements that are necessary to sustain the increasing demand of the common core standards and the 21st century learning.
Thank you.
I think I'm still sore from that game.
I was just going to say the same thing.
I know Mr. Kasimis was designated the Twinkle Toes Kasimis during that game. What was yours, Mayor?
The first time, I was a little squirrel. And then when I passed the ball between the wizard's legs, there you go, oh, there's Burt Reynolds.
Then we got that, was it the Jolly Green Giant?
Yeah, yeah, the Jolly Green Giant, Joe. We had a bunch of them.
That was a fun night.
It was.
Okay, next we have Ms. Brenda Penn-Williams.
My name is Brenda Penn-Williams. I reside at 21 Kirin Drive in Norwalk. Good evening, board members. As a grandparent, a grandmother of elementary twins, I am appalled and quite frankly disgusted to read the racist rhetoric that is elected BOE member Jack Chiamonte engaged in on his Facebook page. This is not the first controversy regarding racism. Remember, when he referred to the BOE member Shirley Mosby, the girl who cried laugher, he should be removed from the BOE because obviously, his views doesn't represent the makeup of this city. Shame on you, Jack Chiamonte, who lived in the Jack Crow era. Whoops, I mean Jim Crow. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Jeff Spar.
Thank you. Jeffrey Spar, 32, Stony Brook Road. I saw some pictures of Artie on TV, of him wet, playing basketball. Artie got game. They came in checkers, though. I'm here to speak on behalf of the resolution that's before the Board of Education for Autism Awareness, for the month of April, celebrated across the world. The United Nations has made declaration of autism awareness for the month of April. I know the mayor has graciously agreed to come to an event that we're having on March 3rd. They've agreed. Just a couple of statistics. The prevalence of autism is 168 children. It afflicts or affects boys five times more frequently than girls. There's about 5.5 million people living in the United States that have autism, and it cuts across all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic lines. Unfortunately, 35% of the children who have autism have not received a job or gone to higher education after high school. We all know that autism is a complex development of disability that typically appears during the first three years of life. It's a result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the brain. It impacts the development of social interaction, communication, skills, and behavior. We also hear the term about somebody being unsuspectable. What does that mean? Autism is a spectrum disorder, which means that there's a common saying about people who are unsuspectable. Once you've met somebody unsuspectable, you've just met one person unsuspectable. They manifest itself in so many different ways. The other thing that's unfortunate is that autism is usually, many times, not a standalone disorder. It also has to do with other problems. For example, it could be other mental impairments. It could be learning disabilities. It could be ADHD, OCD, which is occupational compulsive disorder. And the unfortunate thing is that when you have these comorbid conditions, whereas autism itself is difficult to address through any type of therapy, when you have the other comorbid conditions, it makes it more difficult to address. So, for example, my son is one of those individuals that has severe ADHD, and he has what's known as Asperger's. It's a high functional problem. The problem with that, though, is because with his ADHD, he's easily distracted. He goes off target. The problem then is that he becomes compulsive as to where he's going. And when he goes off target or off topic, it's tough to get him back. It's like a train coming, a little toy train, trying to get it back on track. I'd like to say is, one of the, like, why do we have autism awareness? We want to stress two things. Number one is, that those children with autism, they're different. They're not defective. And they have different disabilities. They have different abilities, not disabilities. I appreciate your awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there's a great picture of your daughter that she posted on Facebook with the winter guard.
Thanks. Not nice for parents, but that's nice.
Next, we have Ms. Sue Haney.
Excuse me, poor Aunt Sue Haney. Stephanie Christopher Lane. With two dyslexic kids reading and reading failure is important to me. So is parent outreach. And I'm glad to know that every K-5 parent will now get the unclassed K-5 assessments. It looks like the assessments will be given out during March conferences. That's a lot of information for parents. Which is why a first-side program by Bruce Malion, head of the NFT, that in conjunction with Norwalk Public Schools, called Literacy for Parents for Their Children is of interest. Which brings me to my FOIA request regarding literacy for parents for their children. Deputy Superintendent Dona passed my FOIA on to corporate counsel earlier today. Much of the information I requested is proprietary, which I found interesting because it's a parent engagement program. So how can that be? And this program is supposed to expand to other Title I schools in Norwalk this spring. Doesn't it seem that a parental outreach program to improve early literacy, sanctioned by the state of Connecticut, should be a best practice, transparent, parent-child focused, and certainly include input from Norwalk's own early childhood members, childhood council members? Thank you.
Thank you. It's all that we have signed up for public comments. All yours.
Very good. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Connolly.
Oh, good evening. There are three things I'd like to report on tonight. And the first is, you're going to be asked, when you get to the consent agenda, to approve the retirement of seven administrators. Five who are retiring as part of the incentive program, and two others that are just offering the retirement effective the end of the year. In accepting these retirements, I think the board and the community should be cognizant of the following. These seven people have dedicated 178 years of professional work to the Norwalk Public Schools. So we're losing a significant institutional history, a significant number of people who are leaving, and all of their educational talents unfortunately will go with them. I'd just like to mention the seven people that are leaving, and a little bit about them. First is our deputy superintendent, Tony Donia. Tony has been with the district 20, 36 years. He's performed, as I took a look at his personnel history, he started as a social studies teacher, has been a central office administrator, has been the interim principal at Norwalk High School, has been the interim superintendent, and is currently the deputy superintendent. And in between, there are probably six other job categories that he filled. Again, Tony leaves us with 36 years of dedicated service. The next person I'd like to mention is Dr. Dee Carricki. She's the assistant supervisor of special ed. Believe it or not, Bee has given us 48 years of dedicated service to the school system, both as a special ed administrator and as a special ed teacher. The third person is Paul Crissanich. Principal of Tracy School. Paul has given us 29-plus years of service. Paul is currently a principal, but in the past, he was a P.E. administrator, a house master, and probably best known for his coaching talents, coaching both football, track, and, I believe, at Norwalk High School. Next is Linda Sumpire. She is the principal at Ponus Ridge. She has given us 15 years of service as a school administrator. Linda is very active in the community, and back when she had children in the school, was one of the leaders in the parent PTO movement here in the community. The fifth person is Eileen Lamedola. She is retiring as the site director at Tracy School. She's been with the district 25 years, so Tracy loses both their principal and their site director. And prior to becoming a site director, Eileen was an elementary school teacher here. The two other people who are retiring, who were not part of the incentive program, first is Fran Mahoney. Fran is the principal of Woolpit School. She's been with the district 14 years, and Fran actually worked for me in Bridgeport as a special ed administrator before she came to Norwalk. And last is Ross McCarthy, who's the director of the Center for Global Studies at Bryan McMahon High School, which is a well-recognized and well-regarded regional program. Fran was a house master. She was very active in the community. And I don't think this counts toward her pension, but she was also a former Board of Education member for seven years. So, I want to acknowledge and recognize all of these folks for their dedication. I think from a school district, they'll be sorely missed. And in talking to the board tonight, we plan to start the recruitment process as quickly as we can. But all these folks will be here until the end of the school year. I don't know if any of them are here tonight, if they just want to stand. I know Tony has to come. Anyone else here? One of the things I'd like to recommend to the board, and I think in conjunction with their peers, is have some kind of recognition ceremony for these folks before the end of the school year. The second thing I'd like to talk to you about is a resolution that's before you a little bit later, that Rich will be putting forth, and that's for a transfer and appropriation of money for the South Norwalk Community Center after the Bell Program. I think, as the board is aware, we've been working very, very hard with the South Norwalk Community Center in planning and eventually implemented a very needed program. One of Dr. Rivera's last acts, I know it was the very last day he was here, is to sign the agreement with the South Norwalk Community Center for the program. Our hope is, we've hit a couple of hiccups, but I think they're all taken care of. One, there was some issue about the condition of the building, particularly the roof, and that came out of some comments at a city, a common council subcommittee hearing. All of the issues regarding the roof have been satisfied, as far as I'm concerned. The second hiccup we had was, when the program was originally planned, part of the funding was thought to come from Title I, which is a federal grant. And in further research, we find that Title I money would not be eligible for this program. So therefore, that's the reason Rich is coming to you tonight, to fill that gap. Is our hope that if all goes well, the program will be starting up at the end of April, at the very, very latest, the first week of May. It's a needed program. It's a program that has been long planned, and certainly my intention to make sure that we follow through our commitment to the children who'll be eligible for that and get the program off the ground. There are two other programs that I want to mention to you, and I'm going to weave them into my report. First is the Mayor's Science, Summer Science Program. Tammy Mokas, our science coordinator, is here with staff from the aquarium, the Norwalk Maritime Center. This is really an exciting program. I really want to congratulate the administration, the mayor, as well as the Maritime Center for really putting this program together, and obviously it was planned with Tammy's assistance. This will give a number, I believe it's 50 7th and 8th graders, an opportunity to have a very, very, very unique experience in the summer, using one of the greatest assets that the state has here in Norwalk, and that's the Maritime Center, and all of the programs, equipment, et cetera, that the Maritime Center has available to them. I've always thought of the Maritime Center as a jewel in Connecticut, and I'm just delighted that we've developed this very, very deep partnership with the schools, and I think, and I hope, will be the start of many, many more like it. So, Tammy, do you want to come up and kind of brief the board? We did have a press conference last week announcing the program. We'll be recruiting students very, very shortly. But I think the program was important enough that we wanted to bring it to the board's attention and have it on the board agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tammy Mokas, and I am the K-12 Science Construction Specialist for the Board of Education. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to come to you this evening to speak about this exciting program that Mr. Connolly spoke about. The Mayor's Engineering and Science Program is going to be held at the Norwalk Maritime Aquarium. It's going to involve 50 7th and 8th graders. These 50 7th and 8th graders will have the choice between two different sessions. One session is the last week of July, and there's another session in August. These students will have the opportunity to apply for these sessions via an application process that will be available to them toward the end of March. Students will be selected for the program by their building administrator of their middle school, and also by their science teacher designate at the middle school. Upon acceptance into the program, the children will then have the opportunity to explore many facets of marine and marine science and engineering. And we hope that the students will continue with their enthusiasm as they progress through high school and also for their post-secondary plans. You may be wondering why we targeted or why we focused our program on 7th and 8th graders. Research shows that children at that particular age begin to lose an interest in science. And if we engage them in authentic learning experiences that will carry them throughout their post-secondary plans and also through high school, then we have a target audience for engineering and science careers later on, which can also help us in the Norwalk community as well. Tom Naaman is here, who's the Director of Education at the Norwalk Maritime Aquarium. And he's going to speak specifically about the program and what children will be engaged in during their time in our program. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. As Tammy said, I'm Tom Naaman. I'm the Director of Education at the Maritime Aquarium. And it's a pleasure to be here, and we're so excited about this program. We will have, as Tammy said, 50 7th and 8th graders joining us for a full week at the aquarium. We'll have a day devoted to maritime technology, a day devoted to ecosystems, a day devoted to conservation, a day devoted to animal care. And we'll give these students the opportunity to understand some of the careers that they might pursue later in life. We'll give them an opportunity to meet with our dive team and to learn about the science and technology of diving. We'll give them the chance to ride our new hybrid-electric research vessel, which will be launching in the late spring. They'll learn about the hybrid-electric technology, which is very innovative. They'll visit our immersive butterfly exhibit. They'll see some films in our IMAX theaters. And at the end of the week, we'll invite their parents in to get a taste of what they've been doing. We have a very, very active camp program at the aquarium, and this is a real pleasure because it allows us to open up what we do to students who might not be able to afford it. We're also extremely excited because, as some of you may know, we have a wonderful STEM after-school program for Norwalk's public high school students. We have 60 students enrolled this year, and they join us one day a week after school to learn about STEM careers and topics. And many of them will be with us for three, if not four, years. We're in our second year now. We had great retention. And we hope to see this summer program for 7th and 8th graders be a feeder program for that high school opportunity. So it'll allow us to have students for as many as five or six years coming to know the aquarium intimately, work with our scientists and our educators, and really form a partnership that will be something that they'll remember and draw on throughout their life. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I do have a schedule of what the children will be doing during the research. I want to share that with everybody.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Again, the Norwalk Maritime Center and the aquarium is truly an asset just now for the city of Norwalk, but for the whole Northeast region. And I'm just delighted, the kind of partnerships that they have developed with the school system here, and partnerships that we certainly can expand. And as a superintendent in a former port city, I was always jealous of Norwalk because I didn't have a facility like the Maritime Center. And I think we used to come down here on occasion and borrow classes, and that's... It's, it's really going to be a, an exemplary program, not only for Norwalk, but I think it'll be looked on by other parts of the state of Connecticut, too. And lastly, I just wanted to comment very briefly on the Lockwood Mansion, the Lockwood Matthews Mansion. I had the opportunity last week to meet with the leadership of, of the mansion, and obviously you saw the young people tonight who, who won a writing contest and were developing a new writing contest for this coming year, for this spring. The mansion will be opening up their servants' quarters. And those of you who, like me, might be addicted to Dalton Abbey, or, or the cottages at, at Newport, I always was concerned about the living conditions that people in service to these mansions had. And at least the staff at the Lockwood Mansion tells me that when they open up the servants' quarters in a few weeks, the servants' quarters there were really, were really quite generous, and were quite spacious and well-appointed when you compare them to the, when you compare them to some of the other mansions of that period. And here's a connection. It's St. Patrick's Day, and in asking who these people in service were back in the 1850s, most of them were from Ireland. And most of the servants that came here were, were from Ireland, and many of these people settled in Norwalk, and I'm sure many of us who have Irish descent, look at our ancestry, you might find that some of them actually were in service back 150 years ago at Lockwood Mansion. So that's my little segue into St. Patrick's Day, but at the same time to, to congratulate the people in, at Lockwood Mansion, and know that we're going to give them every support we can as we, as we have the essay contests and the writing contests. And the contests will be centered around the servants' quarters and the servants that came here in the, in the 1850s. So with that, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Lyons, can I have a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have raised my hand earlier. I had some questions about the aquarium. Now, mayor, if you could answer it for me, for the aquarium?
Sure.
I know it's a week long, and it's fully funded, so the parents don't have to pay for that, no cost to families. What is the criteria? I mean, I know that the administrators are involved and the teachers, but what are the criteria?
Well, 7th and 8th grade.
7th and 8th grade, I know that.
They have to fill out an application.
Right.
They're going to be doing an essay.
Okay.
And then we have people that are going to serve on the team. One of the councilwomen, Sharon Stewart, will be on the selection committee.
To review the essay?
To review the essays and help select the children.
Okay.
It's going to be, the recommendation from the middle school principals is going to be also highly regarded and highly considered.
So the teachers recommend, and they do an essay, and then it's forwarded over to the principal?
Right.
Okay. And how many, I know it's 50 to 70 students, I need to do the math on this, but how many?
There's 50 students total.
50 students total, 7th and 8th graders?
Twenty-five in each, each class.
Okay, okay. And it's week-long, only a week-long?
Right. It's funded by the Mayor's Energy and Environmental Task Force.
Okay.
We, we gave a total of $10,000, we've got another $10,000 coming.
And it's taking place the end of the summer, is that correct?
July, last week of July, and the week in August. I'm not sure if it's the first week, but it's one week in July and one week in August, two separate classes.
That is effective this year?
Yes.
Okay. And when do they do the essays? When does this all start happening?
I believe it's in progress right now, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you. It's a great program.
Yeah, thank you.
It sounds fabulous.
Yeah, tidy, the first session will be the June 29th to July 3rd.
Oh, June, I thought it was last July.
Yeah, it starts in June, it begins on the 1st of July, and then the, the second session will be August 10th to August 14th.
Okay.
Ms. Harris?
I just wanted to make a comment on one of our retirees, Linda Sumter. I, Linda was one of my principals. I, Linda was, was quiet, but she was very fair, and I thought she was very ethical to her staff, her students, and the parents. She addressed all of our concerns seriously, she took everything seriously, and she was not opposed to pushing students. She didn't take it personally if a parent asked to have their student pushed. She didn't make it, make us feel like, oh, that's too much work for our teachers. I just really appreciated her, and I think Norwalk is losing a very great asset.
I agree.
All right. Ms. Mosby?
Yeah, I, all of them, Tony DeDonna, DePaul, DeBee, Linda Sumter, they all, it's going to be truly missed because that is a lot of history and knowledge that's walking out of the door. And seriously, we all need to really, you know, we're very fortunate to embrace having them here because that is a lot, and there's going to be some big shoes to fill with them being gone, with those years and the knowledge, the history that we're going to be losing from this district. And I wish them all success, luck, and, and, and they're going to truly be missed because they were a big part of the Norwalk School District, a very big part.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then we'll move on to actions. First item is the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar is items 62A, approval of personnel, 62B, approval of budget transfers, 62C, approval of trip Norwalk High School to Belize. One thing I should note is that the, one item under personnel items is withdrawn, the very last one, request for appointment. The individual has withdrawn their, their acceptance of the position, the teaching position. So, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
That is the last one.
The very last one. Jennifer Purdy. Jennifer, play this one right here. That one's withdrawn.
This is Mary.
No, it's Jennifer Purdy. Oh, that's, that's the old packet. The new packet was, was emailed out to the members yesterday. And it doesn't make any difference because pulling this off leaves us right back at the original. So, well, let me get the motion on the table, and then if you want to remove something.
And then I'd ask for, it will be perfect.
Yep. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved, so Ms. Reeves is second, and Ms. Keys, okay. Are there any matters that people want removed from consent?
I want to remove 62B for discussion.
Okay. Budget transfers removed. Anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote to approve the consent calendar minus 62B. All in favor, please indicate. And that is unanimous. All right, next item is approval of budget transfers. Is there a motion to approve budget transfers? Ms. Reeves moves, it's her second. Ms. Harris seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Mosby?
Yes, Rich, if you could come up, because I just want to get some further clarification because I didn't want to interrupt you when you were giving your superintendent report. And I just want to get some clarification on the South Norwalk Community Center and this transfer that we're going to possibly approve tonight. And my, my question is, because if I heard you right, we, we at first thought that this was going to be a Title I-funded.
Well, part of it would be Title I.
Right, right, part of it, right. Now, my, my question is that, because now since the board has to put the funding, this funding in, will this be something that we have to sustain or go in the future with this type of funding? Will this be part of our budget? So, you know, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get at.
It's not a part of the 1560 budget, so the determination as to whether or not the program will continue after the first initial agreement. But we have no budget funds in the next year budget to stay in program.
Okay, so we're just going to go, this is like a one-time deal?
The transfer is to fund a program for the end of April, the beginning of December.
Right, so, okay. So it's, it's, it's just for that one time. All right, and, and you said that there's a sign, memorandum of understanding? Is it possible, if I can get a copy of that?
Yes. Mr. Simmons?
Actually, I have questions on the language that is used here. It says, as a result, to start the program, you're going to need $20,000. You just said to complete the program from now until June.
So there's two funding sources that we're going to use. There's $20,000 that's for today, and about another $20,000 to $25,000 that's available in the extended school hour grant. That grant will primarily pay for the personnel that's within it. The funding here, part of it is for supply materials, equipment, furniture.
Okay, so there's no chance of you coming back asking for more money?
Not at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ms. Murray, then Ms. Reeves.
Yes. Is there any way that we could be assured that there are no other agreements that were made that fall under this category where we thought we're going to use the Priority One money funding, and now we're not? Is there anything else that falls under that as far as our agreements that were made, as you said, just before departing of our superintendent?
This is the only one I'm aware of, but I think we can, Rich and I can inventory, but this is about the only one I'm aware of that, that needed to be implemented.
Both will we spend in priority schools or even the district portion of Title I funding those salaries?
Those two.
Salaries?
I would like, excuse me, if you could just look into that. We have a finance committee meeting next month, so we have a little time.
Okay.
If you could bring that as part of one of our agenda items, please. Thank you.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes, I would, I would really like to, to see, I think I mentioned it before, if there would be more specifically like the object codes, like on the, on the first, on the $20,000, it's coming from, it says object code 101, and that is?
Long for salary.
Okay. An object code 2690?
Other supplies and materials.
To other supplies and materials. So, so how do you, how, how does that designate it toward the after-school program if it's other supplies and materials? And then Project 54, is that, is that designating that it's for the after-school program?
Project 54 is the curriculum department, the board 1432002.
Do you, or original code, is, is after-school for after-school program?
Right.
After-school program? So, but is there anything here that, that by looking at the, at the code numbers that would refer to South Norwalk? So, so then this code is also used for any kind of after-school program we have in the school district?
We only have one within the district, well, Project 54 was designated as a curriculum or a wide item. So there's an after-school program, whether it be like middle school year olds, it would be 19 at West Rock, or 14 at East Hail, or 16 at Commons.
Under the project code?
Correct.
Okay, and then the 17, the object code 117?
Yes, that is the standard number.
And then object 622?
Electric.
625?
Natural gas.
Okay, and, and the original code 160, 262?
That's a different one, electric.
200?
That's a different one, electric.
Okay, so, so it would be, it would be very helpful if, if there's something that could be, the same way that it's printed on the first one that says South Norwalk after-school program, something simple maybe would be to, to identify this more, more detail, so if someone looking at it could obviously see from two, from two area, so it would be, it would be awesome. And can you supply us with a, with a current listing of, of codes, object codes and priority codes?
Sure, that's in the budget that we set down.
Yes, Mr. Simmons?
I have a two-part question. On the $20,000, again for the furniture, don't we have trailers of furniture that we can give them instead of spending the money?
No.
We do not?
No.
What happened to it?
Deployed to a lot of schools.
What happened to it?
The personal furniture that we do have, ours is the high school furniture, it's not the personal furniture.
Okay. Okay. Second part of the question is, when the program ends, does that furniture become property of NPS again?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Harris?
Mike, I just, I remember that Manny was going to talk to other agencies to see if we can get after-school programs in other areas, and I'm not sure that that ever came to fruition. Is this the only school?
I know that, I know that he had started communications with, with other organizations, but this is the only one that had developed to the point where there was a program ready to go. Because, you know, remember that Sonic got several hundred thousand dollars from, from the city, from CDBG funds to, to build out the facility so it would be ready for this. I don't think anybody else is, is that far along. But it was, I mean, the plan was that this was going to be the first of maybe four or five of these centers, and my hope would be that that would still get carried out at some point.
Okay. And is this, what's the eligibility requirement? Or is everyone in South Norwalk eligible to attend, or do they have a target audience? Do we know any of that?
Yeah, there is going to be recruitment. Tony, could you talk a little bit about the recruitment effort?
It's a target audience, it's a call, and it will be on lottery, it's up to the commission for at least 20 students.
And just one other thing, the, the hiccups as they were referred to, so everything's been addressed and signed off on?
Yes.
For the safety of the students?
Yeah, as far as the facility. We received letters and, and some evaluation of, of the facility, and as far as we're concerned, it's, it's fine.
And, and the lottery, who's responsible? I mean, who's overseeing that? Is it just the center, or is it the center in combination with the school system?
What's the school system?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, or Ms. Reeves?
Yes, I, I also wanted to, wanted to find out, there wasn't mentioned when this was up, when this was being discussed, that transportation, I don't see transportation anywhere here. It was going to be our buses, our, our buses that would take them from, from whatever schools that, that, that they go to, and they would be bused to, to South Norwalk Community Center?
Yeah, I mean, many of them are coming from outlying schools, and the buses would be taking them back to the area anyway. So they, they would be bused from their home school to the, to the South End Community Center. And Tony, were we going to do one bus there? A lot of the children, we felt, would walk home after the program was over. But I thought there was plans for maybe one bus. Are you, can you verify that?
At the end of the program, after we take those students, we need to hand them to the hall.
So would, would that be an extra charge, an extra charge under our, our transportation contract? Is there something additionally that's built into that, or?
There's, there's no charge to the students, and the charge would be to us, but it's very fine if we have buses going down that way.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the budget transfers, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? All opposed? Abstentions? One abstention? Okay, eight in favor, none opposed, one abstention, motion carries. Thank you. All righty. Next is approval of signed agreement with Medicaid Direct Centrist Group. Rich, walk us through this one.
Have we put it on?
Pardon me?
That's not an option.
Yeah. Yeah, please explain this one, just?
We had discussed this.
On what? Well, not to ask questions, to debate, we have to have a motion. But he can do an explanation first.
Oh, okay, because we, okay.
Go ahead.
We had discussed this at a prior finance committee meeting, well, as two more meetings ago. There was a recommendation by Special Education Department to look into our vendors or Medicaid bill. Currently we use a vendor called Conclaim. And if we do Conclaim, it's 5% of any revenue generated, whereas Medicaid Direct is a flat fee, which was in the packet. As an example, had we used Medicaid Direct from the very beginning, we could save approximately $100,000. We did sit down with Special Education Department, we actually had both Conclaim and Medicaid Direct in to have a proposal and demonstration. Medicaid Direct does have very, very improved for the teachers, and one of the areas that we're trying to solicit more revenue for and helping the general education of Medicaid bill.
Okay. All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Medicaid Direct. Ms. Murray moves, Mr. Simmons seconds, it's a discussion. Ms. Reeves?
So, so, when will we start seeing a difference in savings? Would it be for the remainder of the school year, or the beginning of the next school year?
We have to give about 30 days notice of Conclaim to terminate the You have to give about 30 days notice of Concomplain to terminate the agreement. So if this is approved tonight, you can go forward with that 30-day notice. There would be a little bit of overlap by training and support of the Special Education Department. The savings would really probably materialize around May, towards the end of this fiscal year.
So can you report back to us, let us know as it progresses on a monthly basis then?
Anything else, comments? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate. And it is unanimous, thank you. And Rich, moving right along. Authorized contract for repair, upgrade, replace of public address systems.
As part of the school security security initiatives and the Norwalk Police Department assessment of our schools, one of the items that we could request for proposal is addressing our public address systems. As you recall, in a prior meeting, we carved out need to manage separately. So this is the proposal to do the rest of the schools. We received four bids. We are recommending A and M Elect ISD. They were the lowest bidder, $221,824 for the remaining schools. Their references came back very favorable. So we are recommending for approval to go forward with the repair or replacement of district-wide public address systems for the amount, not to see $233,000, which is within our capital budget, as well as our spending plan and our budget plan enforcement. So the progress is approved. The next plan is to go to the Planned Use Committee and the county council.
Okay. And here, we've already approved the Nathan Hale situation, which was uniquely awful, so we were treating that separately. And this will deal with all of the other schools. I note that you're looking at a total replacement for Norwalk High and Silver Mine, and repairs and upgrades at the other schools. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Rivas?
So the sites that are going to be repaired and not replaced, we will be, we'll have some sort of guarantee as to how long the repair will last?
Yes, we had all the systems actually assessed by third party. Norwalk High and Silver Mine were assessed at, it just wasn't feasible to actually repair it. We weren't really going to get that much more useful life out of it. Whereas the other ones, from a minor repairs to somewhat medium-range repairs, all with the expectation that we would have a long, long useful life once the repairs are done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all right, we will proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the contract as indicated in the packet, please indicate. And it is unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Rich. You can sit down for a minute or two, we'll pull you back up again. All right, next item on the agenda is approve the designation of the month of April as Autism Awareness Month. There's a resolution in the packet, is there a motion? Ms. Rivas moves, Mr. Simmons seconds. Is there any discussion? Ms. Rivas?
Yes, I wanted to mention too, as, since it was publicly commented when they spoke about Autism Awareness Month, what are we as a school district doing in the schools for that? Like in our 19 schools, are we, are we advertising it, like are we putting up pictures, speaking to parents? What are we doing at a school level, at least school, on Autism Awareness Month? I mean, we dedicated it for Autism Awareness, we approve it, and then how is it followed through? Like with Veterans Day, you know, we have classes in Veterans Day, and then we hold the entire day remembering veterans, and when we teach, the instruction is based along those lines. So to make more awareness of it, how do we make awareness in our school buildings about autism? What, do the schools have something planned for Autism Awareness Month? Because I mean, when you dedicate a month, that has to be something just to remember it. So administration, children, and parents are actually aware of it.
We'll be meeting with principals on a variety of issues next week, and this is one of them. And obviously, how you would do awareness in the high school would be very, very different than how you would do awareness in, you know, K-5 schools. So we would ask principals to plan it so it's, so it's age-appropriate. So the type of activities we would have at Wolf Pit will be very different than the type of activities we have at Brian McMahon. And, but we want to, you know, I really believe in leaving the creativity on how to do this to the, to the individual schools and their administration and staff, but we will tell them that, you know, the board has adopted a resolution that, for Autism Awareness Month. I'm sure there's, there's a lot of advocacy groups out there that we could, we could tap for material, et cetera. So we're going to, we'll be putting it on our agenda with the principals next week.
Okay, because at a high school level, what I, what I know is that they have, there's a club. It's called the Best Buddies Club, and they have one in Norwalk High and they have one in Brian McMahon. But I mean, as a, as a, as a school completely, I mean, that's something that's very, very important to me and to a lot of, a lot of citizens in Norwalk also, because it's, it's a very important thing because we want to have readiness for all of our children.
Exactly, yeah.
And that should be, to me, it should be a very big deal.
And we'll work with the schools to get something going.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spar?
I think that's a great question that you have there. I can tell you, Mr. Superintendent, I volunteer to help you out with that. I have a lot of contacts.
Okay, great.
That I could, you know, send you towards. Also, we've got, having in contact with the Autism Speaks Room, they have a program just called Light of Blue. And I had so worried for, and I received an art box of materials, autism as well as bracelets. And my daughter attends Norwalk High School alone with a couple of friends. The week of Autism Awareness Week, if you're second, they're going to be working with the school to have an awareness program. They're going to have each day during that week, they're going to make an announcement with a different aspect of autism, with a loudspeaker. They're also going to have a table set up, and they're going to sell bracelets for like a dollar a piece of little gel bracelets, and they're going to give the money to the Autism Speaks organization, and they're going to distribute free the materials. In addition, their hope is to design like a website that would have photographs of kids, you know, wearing bracelets, or just generally, you know, making a comment about, you know, autism, and just to have on that website different links to go to them. So I think that's a great question that you had. I go to Norwalk High School, with my daughters going to work on that, and I volunteer to help you with that.
Okay, thanks.
I would also like to say that I would be, would like to be part of the discussion as well, and I think I do have some suggestions, and you should reach out to, there's a lot of children within our school district that are on this, under the spectrum, and they would like to participate perhaps in these sort of activities. So I'm suggesting to reach out to the clubs that are there, because I think it would be good to join with the entire school, and to reach out to them as well, because the Best Buddies Program is an excellent program where the children under the spectrum have a lot of problems with social skills. So that's a very, an important, important topic. I just want to make sure that all children feel included.
Also, if I can, I don't mean to, it's okay, Rich, can I say something? Is it okay?
Wrap it up.
I've had some commitments from the East North Public Library, they're going to purchase some books on autism, they're going to have them on display, and also I have commitments from Christine Brappy and Sherrill Moses, and there are going to be some displays of autism for the kids as well. Also, I think I said everybody, on March 3, we're going to have a Light of Green celebration at 7 o'clock on the Green, so if any of the kids can help, have them there, there's going to be some, there's going to be press coverage, and the mayor's going to be there, Doug's going to be there, the mayor's going to be there, and, well, again, the mayor and the representatives are going to be there, so.
Last thing, please?
Yes?
Okay, in April also, the Best Buddies Programs, they're going to have a talent show. It's held, it's held every year, and I think it's important that as a school district, we attend this, because these children, they work hard. Like we have Norwalk High, and Brian McMahon, they put on performances, Beauty and the Beast, all of these wonderful shows they have, and the children really work hard to be, they can't be part of what the population in the school does when they do the musicals, so they do their own performances. And the attendance is poor, and I think that, you know, only the parents of the children are there. But I mean, staff should be there, you know, some staff shows up. The community should be out there, because this is a very important thing, and if this, we're dedicating Autism Awareness for April, then I think everyone should really make it an effort to show up to the talent show, and it's done every year. And this year, they want to do something special now that we've dedicated April as Autism Awareness. I think that we should really publicize it, and so people can show up. Maybe invite Channel 12, or maybe have it advertised in the newspaper. That's, that's what I would just, thank you.
Okay. All right, then we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of designation of April as Autism Awareness Month, please indicate. And that is unanimous, thank you. All right, Jeff? All right, moving on to information reports, February 2014 Monthly Financial Report. Mr. Roodel is getting his exercise tonight.
We completed eight monthly fiscal years against a budget of $168.3 million. We've spent $90.7 million, which is approximately 54% against 67%. When factoring in items like the NFT summer approval and severances, you're still lower than the budget. In addition to that, the insurance trust fund is the cover territory and health insurance claim through February after it's better or less than.
Excellent. Any questions, Mr. Roodel? Keep up the good work. All righty, next is Mayor's Engineering and Science Program for 7th and 8th Graders.
We already did that.
We've already talked about that and gave the update, okay. So next is Committee and Representative Reports. Let's start with Jack, Facilities, anything? Did he report? Okay, Shirel, anything? Okay, Mr. Barbas, negotiations personnel?
No, I think it's pretty quiet. We're still trying to finalize food service, but the ball's in their court.
Okay. Policy Committee?
Yes, quite a bit.
Okay.
We had our meeting tonight, a very lively discussion, everyone was present. First policy was 9320, which is our meeting time. We did discuss that during our last policy meeting, we also brought it to the board a little bit last time for discussion. We've had the 7:45 time period for many, many, many years. So we've all discussed a possible time change of 7:00. We were all in agreement on that. So we would like to, we changed the language on it, which was required from our last board meeting to look at that, to see what we can change, which we did. We'd like to bring it to the full board, our next meeting, which will be April 7 for a vote. If it's a yes, that we all agree, it's unanimous, it will take place effective April 21st for our meeting in April, our last meeting in April. It would be a win-win for board members, community members, spotlight. We have, as you could see, every meeting, we have spotlight, we have children coming in. It'd be great to get them in and out, and getting home, doing homework if they have to, or going to sleep early. But we think it just, we will get more participation here as well if we have earlier meetings. We all agreed upon getting the hour involved, getting advertisement, letting parents, community members know, teachers, principals, that our new possible start time will be 7:00. Putting it on our website, PTOC, letting them, getting them up to date, and so they know. Our school messenger as well. So we just kind of wanted to get the word out early. Again, it's going for a vote, so it's not confirmed yet, but we just wanted to let everyone be aware that it might possibly be happening. We also discussed policy or bylaw 9325, which is meeting conduct. We did change a little bit of the language. We'd like to bring it back to the board. We'll bring the bylaw back here for further discussion, and hopefully for a vote on the 21st on that. Information discussion, policy 6142, which is physical activity. As I discussed during our last meeting, we do have a committee, a recess committee, that Tony Dodona helped formulate, from our elementary schools as well as our middle schools in regards to recess. We do have representation from our principals and parents. We do want representation from every school, because it's such a critical policy, and we're getting a lot of feedback that our children are out during recess, they're not. There's also an issue with our blacktop, our parking lot, if it's accessible for children to go outside. We realize we've had a really tough winter this year, but we want to make sure that our kids get out. So again, we have a recess committee that is looking at this. They are meeting again, I believe, on March 24, and I'm hoping, Tony, that we'll have some feedback, some ideas, some dialogue, some discussion, that they can come back for our next policy meeting and present their ideas to the policy committee. Also, if I can bring up Mr. Lyons, if it would be okay, Carol Marsh, I cannot pronounce her name.
Mira Nacho.
Mira Nacho, thank you, Mira Nacho. We have culinary, the Norwalk High School Culinary Cafe, which I believe is open for business. We've all, yes, today, here we go. And we've all been invited as board members. And what I'd like to do, if it's possible, again, we can have a discussion on this, but it would be great if we could have a board meeting at Norwalk High School, just so we can try out some of their food that they're offering, which I think would be great. And I also think for discussion, I'm not sure where this can take place, but I think it would be really important, we always have our meetings here, would be great if we can visit some of the schools. And I know when I was running, which, you know, that was a while ago, a couple of years ago, but I always felt that it was important that we have meetings at our schools, at our elementary schools, or middle schools, and high schools. Doesn't have to be every meeting, but maybe every other month, something. I just think it's important for us to be visible, and even though we're televised, which was a huge hurdle to get that done, and I'm glad that we have that, parents sometimes just can't get out if they're closer to their own home school district. Would be easier to have more parent participation in some of our meetings. So I think it would be great if we could sometimes have our meetings at some of our schools. I think the way, a platform for us possibly is to start it off at Norwalk High School. So maybe we can work on some type of date, Mr. Chairman, if everybody's in agreement, to have one of our board meetings at Norwalk High School, and we can have dinner, and we can have participation.
Thank you. Ms. Mosby?
Years ago, we used to have meetings at different schools, and when I was on board previously, so.
How did that go? I mean, how was the presentation?
It was, it was good. We had different schools, we, you know, selected, and we went, and we had the meetings, and it went very well.
I mean, as long as I've been on the board, we've never had that. And I just think it's, I think we've all thought about it, it just has never materialized, but I think Norwalk High School, if we could start it off there, we have a dinner, we have parents, you know, whoever would like to come, but I think it would be a great launching, a launch for us to do that. Just a thought, an idea.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Because I think one issue with that, obviously, is, you know, we are videotaping how soon it's coming, we're going to be live broadcasting our board of ed meetings, so obviously, if you're at another, you know, if you're a school, odds are you're not going to be able to provide that service, and I think a lot of our residents do watch those videos. I love the idea of going to our schools, don't get me wrong, but there are.
There is a trade-off.
There's a trade-off.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
No, he's absolutely right. That was not an issue when we had the meeting.
Right, because we didn't have the TV and...
There was none of that. Social media wasn't where it is now, so.
Right.
But the fact of it is, we did, but it also, it spoke to the rest of the community, because that was one of the other pieces that we felt, when we were going into the communities, not only just the schools, but also allowing some of these, some of our parents who were not able to get to City Hall, look at transportation, look at a number of things. So that was a factor as well. As you said, we didn't have that issue, technology.
All right, Ms. Rivas?
Yes, we also, we also, when we didn't have this broadcasting through the IT department, we were taping, I think Jack's daughter one time, she was recording the board meetings at one time, and there was a way that it was put on to there, or those meetings were recorded, and since they were taped, they were sent out to our website.
That was done by NEF.
Yeah, I guess Laura was, she would record it, then she would drop it off at NEF, and then they would take it the next day, and they would put it out.
Yes, I know, because she, yeah, so his daughter used to tape a lot of the meetings. But with, with our IT department, maybe that could be forwarded to IT, and IT could supply and put it on our website. Now, you did mention, Ms. Keys, that this would come back to the board, when, 21st, you said?
For what? Discussing the, having a different schools, you mean? No, the policy, the...
The timing?
Oh, the start time, yes.
Next board.
That will come for the 7th for a vote?
April 7?
April 7.
Okay.
April 7, and then if it all, you know, is unanimous, then it would be affected...
Well, if it passes, it doesn't have to be unanimous.
Okay, that's good. April 21st, it would go into effect.
Okay, and then you mentioned also earlier another date, the 21st, you said the 21st and something, or the 21st?
April 21st for that. It would be in effect for our April 21st meeting.
And then also, meeting conduct, one would also...
April 21st. April 21st for a vote, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the vote for, okay, okay.
We went through the same thing in our policy. We were going back and forth between meeting conduct and meeting, so we went through the same thing. A lot of meetings. Ooh, Kedaya, does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, it goes to everybody else, yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, Curriculum Instruction Committee, we had a detailed update on the K-5 literacy program at our last meeting. At the moment, we have several topics, which I'm actually talking to Tony Dodona about what's the right order to bring these up, but we're gonna be meeting with the science instruction specialist to give us a whole update on the K-12 science program. We're gonna be dealing with high school scheduling. And also, looking at actual recommendations for the world languages and the social studies, curriculum upgrades. Not exactly sure what order those are gonna be in yet, it's, you know, Tony's gonna get back to me on what the priorities are, but we, those will be the topics over the next couple of months. Artie?
The only thing I have is athletics. I think I mentioned last, at the last meeting, that the Yankees are coming back to do a camp. And this year, it's gonna be two weeks at Brian McMahon. Last year, we did one week. Also, they have, tend to have agreed to doing three scholarships. Last year, they did two, and I think we're gonna press them for more. But letters went out to all the elementary schools and all the kids that are in that age group to apply for a scholarship. So that's already been done, so we're just waiting for the applications to come back.
And Ms. Murray, Finance?
Uh, our Finance Committee for March, that meeting was canceled. First checking with the staff. And our next finance meeting will be April 8th.
All right, on to Board Member Announcements. Any announcements?
I'm sure with a number of other board members, Beauty and the Beast, Heidi Manderz, that side. As always, we're very strong.
Music and theater.
Yes, in Norwalk, and I like to say Norwalk.
Both high schools do a great job.
As well as the middle schools. Because that'll be coming up very soon, end of, end of the month, so.
Ms. Mosby?
I want to say that I went this morning with Artie and the mayor was there too, the grand opening of the Little Bear Cafe, that Culinary Arts Cafe. It was, it was, it was great, it was wonderful. Food is good. And so I went there this morning. And I went last night to encourage to speak with Ginger Cats over at West Rocks. I attended that, and Heidi, you were there as well.
I actually couldn't make it.
Oh, you couldn't?
I mentioned, I could not make it.
Oh, okay.
I volunteered, but couldn't make it.
And then on Saturday, I went to the last showing of the Beauty and the Beast. And so the last couple of weeks have been a quite eventful week of, of enjoying Norwalk and what the, what they have to offer best for our children. And it was, it was good, it was good. And I do encourage people to go over to the Little Bear Cafe, it's, it's really nice. The way the kids have put it together and with the artwork and everything, it's really, and, and they, it, you can see in there that a lot of pride has been put in there, and it's really.
What's about the little bear?
Little bear, Little Bear Cafe.
Little bear. This is their cartoon.
Yeah, a lot of it. Yeah, and the, and the kids are so excited and they're, two of them, that, that this was their senior project, and, and it's, and they finally came to fruition with it, and they are excited, and I'm excited for them, and they were just, they had a little band playing, you know, and everything. It was, it was good, and everyone, you know, that was there, and they had a nice time, was casual and everything.
Good.
And, of course, you know, superintendent, internship superintendent, Conley was there too as well. And Tony Dodona, I can't forget you either, and Brenda, so.
All right. Anybody else? Yes. Artie? Yeah?
Have anything?
Nope.
As you know, went to the Harlem Wizards game, these guys did a really fantastic job putting it together, so thank you very much for including me. And some people don't know, but Senator Duff and I had sat and had a strategy. And our strategy was, if we ever got the ball, we're gonna send it over to Burt Reynolds over there. See what he can do with it. But as you know, it didn't work out too well, but.
No.
You got a shot of Jolly Green Giant.
Yeah, I know, but keep us in mind for next year, I'd love to be a part of it, thank you. Also, did Beauty and the Beast, it was great, and Culinary Cafe today as well. Good things are happening in Norwalk.
Absolutely. Ms. Keys?
I'll echo, Beauty and the Beast, fabulous as well. I think we're all going with different times, but went, loved it. Wanted to mention that West Rocks, I believe it's next week, 10 days, nine days? Little, yeah, Little Mermaid will be, which will be fabulous. I've kinda seen a preview of it behind the scenes, and it looks fantastic to the kids. It's great that we have these programs and also in some of our middle schools as well. Last Friday, several of us, I know Mike, myself, and Mike D went to Brookside Literacy for Parents for their children, which they have quarterly, which again, they did a fabulous job on that. And to me, it's just so important to start literacy really early. And that is critical and very important. And that's it.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, well, everybody's kinda stole my thunder because I, you know I'm a champion for Norwalk Public Schools. I think we have a public school system second to none. And when you look at all the things that are happening in Norwalk, and, you know, I got so caught up in Beauty and the Beast, I was watching and hoping that that, they'd fall in love before that last pedal fell. Of course, you know the end, but you're just still hoping. And I was privileged to read the prologue on Friday night, and I never knew really the story of the whole thing and how it happened. But that, and the literacy for parents, and the Harlem Wizards game, and the tribute to, to Mo Tomlin, all those kinds of things that are happening in the Norwalk Public School System, the Little Bear Cafe, which we went to today, and, you know, it's just an amazing thing to see all this happening. I, I just think that this is a wonderful school system, and I just thank everybody because this is really a collaboration of the Board of Education, of the staff in the schools, of the students. Everybody just pitches in, and really, it's a, it's just an amazing thing to see, so thank you to all of you for all your hard work.
Okay. Anything else? Sherelle, did you have your hand up? No?
I didn't, but I do wanna mention that Maureen Ruby will be at the South Norwalk Library tomorrow evening, 6 to 8, discussing pre and post testing. And if she's in, like she was in our curriculum meeting, the parents and whoever comes will be in for a treat.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, I'll just follow up, kind of a little bit of what Harry was saying. I mean, I went to something for the board fed every night last night. It was like, it went from financial to reading to entertainment. And so there, you know, that's what you do, obviously, when you're on the board, there are a lot of different interests that are partaking in. But I will say, you know, Maureen Ruby at the Curriculum Committee meeting really was impressive, and I think what should go on the record is, you know, there was this big battle that people are trying to incite about testing, and, you know, should kids opt out of testing, and some towns are allowing kids opt out of testing. I don't think we've taken a policy yet, but I'm seeing more and hearing more and more noise. Some of it's a political issue with kind of, whatever, freedom of, I don't know what. But I think it is something we might wanna address, you know, and if you listen to Maureen, you'd be a comfort that all this assessment is great. But I have spoken to some teachers that, you know, some of the stuff, especially with the curriculum journeys, has like crazy amount of, of testing that, as I'm not sure the value of it could be debated, so we probably wanna revisit that. But I think any parent who is concerned about testing should come out to South Norwalk Public Library tomorrow and listen to Maureen, because she really has a very convincing argument that all this assessing, it's not necessarily testing, but assessments are very, very valuable, and especially with our goal of wanting to close the achievement gap, which is, you know, what could be more important than that, you know, maybe a little overtesting, if you wanna call it that, is, is required at the start. What, what time is tomorrow night?
It's 6 to 8, but she uses the term progress monitoring, which is, she has a really good analogy for that, so I just suggest.
So I would encourage, and I know there are members here from the PTOC, to spread the word to your communities that, you know, they should come, come hear, you know, hear a little bit about this, because this is becoming a very big topic, hasn't been in Norwalk yet, but it definitely is in other parts of the state and across the country.
Jack?
Hi, I just wanna respond to Ms. Bernadette Williams' remarks, erroneous remarks, that racism to me is just as ugly in any color you serve it. I had a discussion and something on, as we mostly do on our private Facebooks, that someone basically hacked and took some information out of, of, of a dialogue that I had. And while I may not have used, I would, may have used in private more flowery language than I would use it in an open forum like this, I did not slurp any ethnic group. I did have a problem with ethnic, with racial bias, not just in the city here, but on, by this government. How some certain interracial actions that happen out there are broadcast and given to us 24/7, even lied about over and over, and ugly protests, while others that are just equally as gross because they're the other way flipped are overlooked. So I am pretty much disgusted, number one, that you, people would go into my private discussions and try to use it in public, because we're all members here of the board. We have our own lives. We're just like you. And while we here in this room, we're board members. But to use such low-life ways and try to use disgusting blackmail tactics, okay, that to me was disgusting. And I'll challenge anybody to go right ahead, but I, and I'll give you plenty of examples if you want, but I do not like seeing interracial biases, not by our government leaders and not by our town. And I'll stick by that. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Murray?
I think it's a place that's, I understand we have our committee reports, but Mo Tomlin, he gave a lot to this community, he gave a lot to this district. I think Susan Korsjak and her staff did an outstanding job at the memorial, the Braddock Man Auditorium, I'm sorry, gymnasium was packed. And I don't have to tell you about Calvary Baptist Church and the service and what happened, but I just think that there might be something, when you heard, I think it was his former coach, talk about Mo's contribution, there might be something there that we might want to recognize to his family. Everyone knows his youngest son, who was outstanding. I'll leave it there, he's brilliant. But the fact is, I just think that the board needs to look at that a little closer and see if there's a recognition of him, at least to be done for Mo for what he's given to Norwalk Public Schools as well as the community.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, the common council meeting on Tuesday night, where also, I've asked Travis Sims, who is Mo Tomlin's cousin, to get up and make a little comment about Mo and recognize him for all the wonderful contributions. A lot of people don't realize how much he did in his own time over at the Carver Foundation, helping young people, keep them off the streets and getting them engaged in some healthy activities and learning how to, the team spirit, and he was really quite a guy, so I, I totally agree.
And I was due to outstanding as well.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. First is the meeting of February 24, 2015, special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Ms. Simmons moves. Is there a second? Ms. Keys, seconds. Yeah, I don't think I have any. Typles. Run the spell check. I'll show you later. All right, and Ms. Mosby?
Yeah, on this, in the minutes, I said when.
Were it 24?
Yeah, yeah, 24.
You have a page number?
Yeah, it's page, I'm sorry. Over here, we're page 10. There was a discussion that I had about the minutes from the Finance Committee not showing about the special ed, having the, the special ed person come in and meet with us, and I don't see anything in here where, because we said maybe through the curriculum, and I don't see in here where, where we said that we're gonna bring the person back to a curriculum meeting or to a board meeting or something, to come in and try to give us more of a explanation on the budget transfers, you know, large, you know, money that was transferred over the last couple of months.
Yeah, I recall that. Can you check the tape, just to make sure her comments are properly added into that paragraph?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes, corrections? All right. If none, with that correction noted, all in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. Unanimous, thank you. And next is March 3, 2015, special meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? March 3? March 3?
It wasn't a special meeting.
Oh, the first one was a special meeting, I'm sorry. I was reading the long line item. March 3 was the regular meeting. Mr. Simmons moves to approve. Ms. Murray moves, seconds. Any changes or corrections? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. And we got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. All opposed? Abstentions? 1, 2, 3.[1755.62]